I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Turn on our microphones here, please. Welcome, this is the city council meeting for June 2019. Today is June 11th at 7:00 PM Tuesday night. And we have one person, if you would like to speak on the open mic, we have a sign up sheet in the back, otherwise our agenda is back there also, so you can follow along with us. Otherwise, we'll move right into approving the agenda. And I do have one thing to add to the agenda. I did receive from the Met Council a new updated population estimate, so I would like to add that as a council item D.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Brien with me?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second that. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. So Commander Heath, you are up.
Good evening, everyone, again. Hope everyone's finding themselves enjoying their summer thus far, although I'm wearing a jacket and it's June 11th, that's kind of unusual for me.
Fifty-one tonight, I see.
That's all right.
I like it.
Yeah. Just a very brief update this month, was another busy month and now then we were up to 156 calls for service this month. One of the nice things I did want to point out, though, that none of those were to bar none, which was a nice decrease from the previous month. And just a couple of noteworthy calls for service. On the 5th, we had deputies that were called to the area of Highway 47 and Viking Boulevard on a report of a male who was stumbling and pushing a motorcycle. And I just point this call out, it's just, it's one of those interesting things you run into. Our deputies got there, found the male who appeared to be intoxicated, pushing his motorcycle. When they started dealing with him, he was actually armed, had a firearm, did have a permit to carry. But he was ultimately arrested for operating the motorcycle under the influence, as well as carrying a firearm under the influence. And it's just one of those things I try to point out, you know, his alcohol concentration was very high, as well as a .21. And I just look at that and just, you know, kind of a, kind of a very interesting thing, but out here and now then, we still get people that are doing things that are out of the ordinary and armed.
Well, he was pushing his motorcycle rather than riding it, that's...
Well, and they had enough, they had enough to show that at some point he'd been actually driving it, and I'm not sure how it ended up stopping at that point, but they had enough to actually arrest him for the operating it while he was under the influence as well. So maybe at the start, if he would have just done the pushing or waiting, it probably would have turned out a little bit better, but, yeah, so an interesting call. And then on the 20th, I don't know if you recall, last month I talked about, our deputies had located a male here on a Department of Corrections warrant, went back to the very same home this, this month on another person that was there that had Department of Corrections warrants. So kind of one of those things that we see, that's another out of the ordinary type thing. We don't tend to see that many people with that type of warrant activity congregating like that. So just something I'll keep an eye on to see if there's a further pattern that develops at that address, but again, it's nice that our deputies are working with folks like the Department of Corrections, and when these things come out, we're able to, we have enough knowledge of the people that live in the area that we're able to help them track these folks down, so kind of works out nice.
Deputize some of the people that come around on Saturday mornings, get their bibles and deputize some of them and see if they can recognize a few of these people.
They probably would, probably be able to help. And then just, I wanted to point out another interesting call, we responded to a theft report of a residence here in town where a safe containing 20,000 US dollars was stolen. And there were some other items within the safe, and it's one of those type of cases where the investigators and deputies have been able to develop some lead on the suspect. So now it's just a matter of seeing if we can continue to follow that case through. But it's also one of those things that cash is something, once it's gone, it's pretty tough to keep track of, so. But other than that, it was a, there was a lot of activity in the month, and we've had a couple of calls over to Twin Lakes Park, but nothing out of the crazy ordinary other than what you'd expect for summertime and younger people getting, getting out and trying to sometimes push the boundaries of what they should or shouldn't be doing, so. Mayor, do you or any of the other members have any questions for?
The, one of the things I was noticing, the trend this year, thefts are way up compared to last year. Numbers. I know in the report this week, the Friday report, there was a trailer right down the road here, taken from the property. And talking with some of the residents, they said there's been quite a, quite a bit. What's the department seen in that? I see there's 15 so far this year, but it seems like bigger things, it seems like, like I say, trailers and cars with keys in them, you mentioned last month, that's one thing, but...
It's really anything of any, even close to being valuable, that are targets of opportunity for people. It's, and it's very difficult, I don't know if you've seen on the news, just in the last couple of weeks, how many burglaries we're having of residences, and the concerning part is a lot of them are becoming more and more brazen. So there's, there's very few things people can do to protect themselves, other than if you're going to have a trailer out, put a lock on the, on the wall hitch, or find some other way to immobilize it. But when you look at some of the cases, we do see, people are so transient now, people that are coming to Now Then might have no connection whatsoever, they might live in South Minneapolis, but they're going to come out here and do their thing, and then retreat back home when they're done. And that, even just that distance sometimes makes it difficult for us to, to stay in tune with who these people are and where they're going. Our hope is that somebody gets caught with that trailer, and we can then start working the case backwards, because a lot of times what we find is, when they are caught with that, for instance, that trailer that's stolen is, you know, it might have been stolen by Person X, but by the time it gets found, it's some guy that bought it for cash off of Craigslist. So then we're trying to put the pieces of the puzzle back on, you know, go backwards to see who actually stole it, because it wouldn't be the, not necessarily the person who bought it on Craigslist who's the one responsible for the theft.
I remember in recent years, vans, work vans and work trailers showing up in town here where they were taken in St. Cloud and abandoned here.
Yep. And it, it's just, it really is anything of any, any value that is a target of opportunity for people. And if you understand the mentality of some of these criminals, their entire job, just like the rest of us, get up every day and go to work or do whatever it is that we do for a living, their entire existence revolves around getting up, and they will drive to whatever area that they're going to go to, and they just start combing the area looking for targets of opportunity. And when they get enough to satisfy them for that day, they call it quits. If they find that big trailer, they'll take off and they'll find a way to, to deal with selling their stolen goods, or, or pawning it, or cashing it in for precious metals, or taking it to a scrapyard for, for just the metal cost. So it's, it's difficult sometimes to catch these people, just because of the fact of how transient they are, how far they're willing to go to commit their crimes, and then that's all they do.
So with that in mind, and because we are so spread out out here, you know, we've got Night to Night coming up here in August. Does the Sheriff's Department have any literature, I know we encourage that night to meet officers, meet fire department, encourage neighborhoods to get together and form watch groups and get to know their neighbors. Does the Sheriff's Department have any material that we could supply also, just as an encouragement for neighborhood watch groups? Out here, it's a little different, you know, you get into the more densely populated cities, that's a more popular, more common notion. It's a little different, because we don't have typically as established neighborhoods out here.
Right.
I just didn't know if you had the literature that, that's what happened, here's what you can do to watch your neighbors.
There's, we don't have a specific set of literature just for that. We try to, most of the education we do is usually when we're talking with people, just in, you know, I was speaking with Councilmember Rainville about attending the farmer's market to have some more ability to interact with the community, those are places where we try to bring that out. But as far as a piece of literature that we have specific to that, that we don't have that. And that's something that we, we've talked about for different things, it just gets to be, with all the different areas that we cover as far as different crimes and things like that, our brochure and literature racks would be very significant if we tried to create a brochure or flyer for every, everything that we're dealing with. So it's, we usually try to do it by word of mouth for that, so.
Council, anything else for the commander?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think that's very effective, the word of mouth out here.
Well, if they don't have it, I can understand that...
Yeah, I know, for them, but I mean, maybe there's something we can do.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we have our newsletter, it's only twice a year. We could, we could look at doing something more, more often than, maybe go to a quarterly newsletter. Yeah, maybe if the Sheriff's Department doesn't have it, maybe somebody within the law enforcement community, within the trade journals or something that...
That was going to be something to offer, we do find other ways of doing it, if we see a string of, of specific thefts in a specific area, we try to find ways, like our Friday newsletter, to let people know. We also will do things on Facebook and things like that to try to keep people informed as much as we can. But sometimes, just for, to have a printed leaflet, we're not always in a place where we can have that as a, as something that would be effective to have, to give to people that we're talking.
We could maybe do it, work in conjunction with the commander's reports, start including something on our website, and then within a short period of time, we're going to be talking about our own Facebook for the city. And so that would be really more, probably more effective these days, between our website and Facebook, and, you know, personal communication. If Sheriff's representatives will show up to things like the farmer's market, and I know they're here at the Heritage Festival and Unite to Unite, so there are opportunities, but it's just a word to the wise, because, you know, we live out where people don't think about locking, because as we've seen, people don't think about taking their keys out of the vehicles.
And it's...
Why do I run all the way back to the house to get a key when I'm out at the barn?
Mr. Mayor, I think that those are some good ideas, that if you guys are pursuing a Facebook page, we can always be helpful, or even if you wanted to try to carve out some space on your website, if we're seeing a different, if we're seeing an increase that we could be very specific to Now Then, I think it's a good idea, and I'd be more than happy to try to help with some of those things, making sure that, that who's ever running them has the information that they need, so.
That will be something that the Club of Treasure has brought up as a suggestion, and we'll be addressing it, so I think those are good opportunities for us.
Okay, just let me know, and I can try to help in whatever way I can.
Anything else for the commander? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, if everybody's...
Know your weather, and hopefully you get to, drop the jacket here, please.
Would you like this on or off? Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. All right, no more items? So, Michael, you are off, you can turn it back on, I guess.
Very good, I'll be quick, I haven't got a lot of things to do. I got a few for getting through another year 2018. The, does everybody have a kind of thing we made some extra?
They do.
If anybody here wants to sit down, it's only takes about 45 minutes, I can go through the whole one, deep down, where I'm just going to...
Are you buying?
Huh?
Are you buying?
I do, uh...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Do a presentation that's called a whoosh over, you know, where it just kind of describes to you the sections of the report, and they are complex. I was just telling Joel, I spent all day yesterday in a ethics class. Eight hours of morality and ethics, so if I slip up, catch me with them. I think I had the final conclusion of the class that there isn't any, there isn't any, it's everybody out for a buck. But if you were looking for a particular thing, that's a good table of content, so. The first thing I want to discuss would be the list of council members, and the reason why we have Randy and Paul still on there, because they were in, on the council through December 31st, 2018, and the new members came after that. The financial section, the very next report, is my report, it's got my letterhead on it, it's got a Roman numeral, I guess that's a Roman numeral, is that a Roman numeral?
That's a Roman numeral.
And it's a clean report that says everything is hunky-dory, and it ends on Roman numeral three. The next thing is something that creates part of the complexity, it's called the management discussion analysis, it's on Roman numeral four, and it tops off with this letterhead again. Ah, isn't that cool, what they can do? What this section is here, on page IV all the way through Roman numeral 10, what this is, is kind of like what we're doing with, Laurie Strike gave me some information about the bonding people. This is in there for them, for the underwriters. They don't understand the financial statements, but they want this stuff. They want a narrative explaining things and bringing it to, it brings it to the, a business model, not the normal governmental accounting. They don't understand it. They just don't understand it. We understand it, we, we put money in the general fund, and then we squirrel some away in other funds, that's what we do, and they have no clue. But so the, this whole front section here is, is information relative to a financial statement under, that you would find on 3M, or some other company. And it was the only way that we could make them understand, and it's helped. They, they look at it now, they can understand that, and underwriters really love to see stuff like this. We don't want to see all those numbers, but they're not trained accountants, unfortunately, they, they are who they are, and they're the ones that we have to schmooze, because we want to borrow money. Finally, we got a real page number. Page one, everybody find that?
You have an extra copy, Mike?
Huh?
Do you have an extra copy?
Yeah, give her one. What'd you do with it? Laurie's hoarding them. What'd you do with the rest of them?
I passed them out.
All right, I'll just listen, I've never had one before.
How can we, in the world, can we be short, being that I made eight extra?
I was seeing if it was on the web, so...
All right, so I'll have to make sure, Laurie, that I...
Did I make sure you read that one?
Yep.
What this is, is on page one, this is a real world balance sheet. I want to repeat my ritual, this is the biggest CPA firm in the world, and this is, this is the balance sheet that I would make up for, for my client IDS, or IFA, or who else does it have, General Health. It, it shows everything, in terms of financial respect. The, the, the only thing we show on our books, our CTS, is the top line, equity and cash pool. We might show the cash held in trust, but those are the only two things that are on the CTS, is cash, 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 and that's why we tripped over things with ADM. But now if you look at this, it is really fascinating, and this is, this is exactly the question this guy's going to have tomorrow, is about page one. Is there any way you can get this tool down now?
It's a phone, everything, so we'll all be over the phone.
There, I gave you a CD, so you can transmit that thing, Ellen has it, now where she put it, I don't know. See, is she going to be around tomorrow? That would be a key thing for those guys to get it, if they'll really throw this, they'll answer most of the questions on their free paper questionnaire. Very healthy looking city, look at it, and look at it, there's no debt. Down at the bottom, where it says nine current liabilities, two in one year, and two after one year, wow, 139, 318, and 380. So when you take, take it all together, you got five million assets, and only 850,000 in liabilities. Wow, that would impress down more stockholders, right? You know, if maybe, well, let's face it, we don't have much debt, but that might change, right?
Carefully, the light, okay.
Yeah, there, I know, I know that, I've seen some cities live dangerously, Aston is one of them, I can, I can bring it up because they're public. They, they have these magic bonds that are called tax abatement bonds, and, and they issued these tax abatement bonds, which ties up the whole city. It, it ties up the taxes for the, for the, or at least all the people that are on the roads, and then they improved all the roads, six million bucks, okay? But before they got that $6 million bond paid off, they, the, the roads went to hell. And they still owed $3 million on the old bond, and they had to issue another, I'm sure it wasn't $6 million anymore, after seven years, or six or seven years, I'm sure it was more than that, to do those roads again. Now, how in the world are you ever, how are they ever going to catch up on that? They're paying off old debt, they're paying off old debt, and they, and they don't even have the roads there anymore. So be careful with, if somebody tries to sell you tax abatement bonds, roads, well, I don't have to tell you, roads are not good collateral.
We're trying to pay attention there, so.
The, the, oh, remember our, oh, our engineer from Hawkinson, what was his name? He, he always told me, what do you mean, what value are these roads? He said, none. The, there is, on page two, there is a, I don't know if you want to call it a nuke, I'm ashamed, it's a, somebody spent, stayed up all night analyzing that, but it really, if you take a look at the right-hand column, it shows that it's a change in position, it's $365,000 improvement during 2018. Wow, wow, that's healthy, that is healthy.
I think, I think it's healthy, but it's balanced, it's not excessive. It's not excessive, it's, it's healthy. I say it's a healthy balance, it's not excessive, it's not like some cities might do, but it's not a debt.
Oh, no, no, you're going on to a different thing, this is a, this is a real world financial sample here, okay? You're thinking, we're going to get into next.
Yeah.
We won't get into that right now, we've spent too much time in the...
Mike, could you stay here so that we're on record here, just want to make sure you're able to be heard there, so.
So the next page would, would be number three, now we're into the world that we understand, right, Brian? General fund, park acquisition, road and bridge improvement, capital, and debt service. Now Laurie, when they start asking you questions tomorrow, now you'll know that when we only have $764,000 in the general fund, it's because right next door to it is a million dollars that we put into road and bridge, that was one of the questions that they had on there, we're, we're taking money out of the general fund. Let me answer your question, well, I'll get to that in a second, Jeff, I'll show you how to calculate if you have a surplus or not. Anybody got any questions on the presentation of, of the balance sheet? Now, it doesn't have all the funds on there, the last two columns combines a bunch of funds, okay? And I'll show you those real quick, too. The little capital, we'll call them 169,000, the debt service, 133, that's, they're going to ask that question, too, that 133 is not our money, you have to take that out in arriving at available cash, okay? It's, it's, it has to be used to pay off the bonds. We had an issue with that a few years back. So there's nothing else exciting about it, as you, but as you can see, in the right-hand column, you got a $2 million fund balance, and very few liabilities. The next, that was me, wasn't it? Sorry. The next page, that's five, shows the revenues that occurred. And if anybody has any questions on revenues during 2018, they're pretty much shown right here, and the expenses down below, and then of course, I did have a question about the $917,000 in transfers. If you take a look at that, it's right there in the second column, Laurie, and of the 917, 736 right next to it went into capital project funds. So there's so many things that we can refer him to by giving him this report. The next thing is, is our blundered, page seven. If you look halfway down, or a little bit more than that, total revenues, total budget of revenue is 1656, actual 1656, can everybody see that? You talk about being right on in terms of a budget, I've never seen anything like this before, you're, you're off by fifty, you had $52 more in revenue than, than you budgeted for. Did you see that? For example, I've, I've never seen a...
Good job, council.
So, but let's go into, there was two questions...
Just to say, if we mess up on it next year, there's three new people in this room, so. Just saying. We did okay.
Yeah, I would get.
That's right.
Once again, you can, you can answer a lot of questions to the underwriters, showing them to that page. Jeff did have a question, was there any money left over, like in public works? If you take a look at the bottom of page seven, it's, it's not a whole lot, and I don't suspect I would do anything with it, you had 388,000 budgeted and spent 337 total public works. But the bad side of it is you go up, you go up into page eight, and you see all those professional fees, and legal fees, way, way, way out of whack, so that the, the general fund, or the general portion...
So that the, the, the general fund, or the general portion of the general fund, where you're talking about administration, is three hundred and sixty-six to, to a budget of two forty-five. That blew us right out of the ballpark. Well, we had Bob in there, and I don't know why the legal is so high.
That, that had to do with our detachment hearing, so we had to hire additional attorneys.
So no, there, there ends up being nothing left over for you to put in to squirrel away. Because if you take a look at the bottom line there, excess of deficiency, about three quarters of the way down, where it shows two ninety-one five hundred is what you budgeted. Two thirty-two six nineteen happened. But unfortunately, your, your transfers to the capital projects was two ninety-one five. So there's, there's no money left over. But what, what I would, you've already made a, a transfer of a good half a million dollars, I think, to the road improvement. If you take a look, you, you don't have to make that kind of transfer. I don't know who talked you into it. You, you take a look at your fund balance at the, at the end of 2018. You got, let's just say, eight hundred thousand, or seven hundred and thirty-four. Okay? Well, how long will that get to us? Now, the, the next page, if you go back to page seven, you, you see that you have profit tax revenues of one million three oh one. Okay? Now you get those in two installments. We're gonna get one pretty soon, I think. Let me know. I'll help you break it down. Divide that in half, a million three, you, you can do it, Jeff. What is it, six hundred and fifty thousand? And then the total expenses on, on page eight, you take a half of that, a million four twenty-four, and you're, you're just right back to where you were before. You got, you got three quarters of a million dollars in the general fund. And why is it kept there? Because you, you're not gonna get, you're, you're gonna spend that money by May, May thirty-first, at seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, okay? But you, but you're not gonna get anything in until June thirtieth. That's why you gotta keep something in the general fund. And I don't know how you did it, but you got exactly the amount of what you should have sitting in there. So that, does anybody follow that? Did I answer your questions, Jeff?
Yes, you did.
All right. Uh, the footnotes, are the next things. Joel, on some rainy night, when you got nothing else to do, page, what is it, ten through eighteen? Or no, there's twenty-two pages of them now. This is another overkill that's put out by the CPAs. I'm embarrassed to say, but what they're trying to do is keep from getting sued, probably, more than anything else. But they're also trying to probably show to underwriters and banks and everything else. They wanna disclose every item. And, and by God, they do. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen is a, is a nice little thing. It shows your capital assets, all the investments that you have. And then the most exciting thing, and the most useful thing that you're gonna run into, Lori Strike, is on page sixteen and seventeen, where it gives the history of the debt. Shows, shows the bonds, the original, and, and then it shows the remaining outstanding by a year. So anytime that you're gonna, you're gonna run into that all the time. But it's right here. Everything that you need is right there. There's a lot of other unexciting stuff here. The, I did promise that we, we'd look on page twenty-four. Is, is, is some of your funds. Pinnaker Lake Road, it's got a little specimen building and park fund together there. The Town Center's got fifty-two thousand. You can use that for anything you want to. Road and bridge equipment. And then the fire turnout here. Now the, the reason the road improvement fund isn't there, because it's up in the front. As, in the top balance sheet, you use what they call the major funds. And this is, is a couple of those two right columns, where it's, it, these are minor capital project funds in relationship to the rest of them. But you can see the activity there. And the next, very next page is page twenty-five, shows the, what went into them. And even they increased transfers in, about a hundred and seventy-one thousand. And then the rest of it went to road and bridge improvement. The very last thing I'll point about is the, the debt service on page twenty-six. They're all perfect, quite frankly. The, the only one it isn't is our beloved Basalt. But as you, we, we just made a transfer, I believe, there. They had two things. They had, they still have this green acre deferred. And it's shown here on Basalt, if you wanna look at page twenty-six. But halfway down on the, on the assets, green acres deferred. Now, you can't, you can't get somebody to pay that until there's a, a death or some sort of a transfer of ownership. So, but what we did is, just to make this fund look okay, we, we transferred the money for that green acres. It's like the general fund bought it from, from Basalt. And, and now, we have to keep in mind, and, and I, I'll do that if I'm involved, that we still have ten thousand coming. The city still has ten thousand coming. But it won't be shown on Basalt anymore, 'cause we, we, we gave them cash out of the general fund. Now, if, once we do that, as you can see, the thing is gonna break even. But that's only after the fact that we had to transfer ten thousand the year before, right, Mary? We had, the city had an also, had an interest. And the mistake that, well, I was directed to do it. The, that one unit, probably should've transferred the money into this, this fund way back at the time that Basalt came into existence. So that's it. The, those two letters in the back say, just say, you're doing everything right from a legal standpoint. And the very last letter says that from an internal control and procedural thing, there's nothing major. So one last thing. This, as I told Joel, this, the one benefit of what happened to us was this thing got reviewed four times. The, the first one was to, what we normally do, and I, I'll get you a, a copy of it there. We have to go through a peer review every year. And the guy that's checking the auditor, check and check and the checker, he, he or she will look at this and make sure it's kosher. Then it goes to the state, and the state auditor looks at it. Then the Minnesota Society, and I always try to, volunteers to review these things. So that's the third one. And then I had a buddy at the state that works for the state auditors. I can't reveal his name, 'cause he wasn't supposed to be doing this. He reviewed it.
Just put them all under.
And the top of all, AEM had the state auditor who was going out, Rebecca Otto. They, they called her and asked her to review all the cities that Michael Pofol did.
Whoa. God.
See, see what happened to me? I went to that class yesterday. I ruined.
Remember your training. And, and you're still here, and you're still licensed.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Too honest. I can sleep at night, though. But what, what they did is they, Rebecca had, she wasn't gonna do anything. She started even an accountant. She, she sent a letter to each one of my city clients, you know, criticizing a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there. We never got anything like that here at Now Then. So there's the, the fifth review. And don't, don't, don't let me fool you. We got some things that are different. You, you got me doing things that are a little bit different than what the average, you know, cast in stone accountant. Because I personally wanna do a financial statement that comes close to my counsel understanding it. And if that vacation thing belongs in the general fund, you like that there, because you say, well, damn, that's gonna eat up my general fund, right? That's why you had me put it there. And if they don't like that, well, to hell with them. And maybe I'm too much of a renegade. Is that enough?
I, I think so. Anybody got any questions? Anybody agree that he's a renegade?
Yes, we agree.
All right. With, with the presentation of the report, I will entertain a motion to accept the audit financial statements as presented.
I'll second that.
You're making a motion.
Would you stand a motion?
An entertaining motion.
Oh, yes, I'll entertain that one.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
You'll have to send it, not, not this book, you have to send it through Safe System, an electronic copy. So if you can authorize that for Lori, to send that in.
And so with that motion, you would, you would authorize Lori to send the electronic version of the audit report through the Safe System.
You are correct, sir. I second that again.
All right. Any other discussion?
Why would AEM investigate all of his cities?
Well, you got a motion.
Don't worry about it.
You got a motion? And any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And then, second item there, we have the proposal for 2019 auditing service contract for Mr. Pofol. It's on the back of your packet, so you see the memo here. The last page will be the proposal. Mine was stapled together.
Sure, and three of that, and I, I would, I would, I would, diving into this, we also had, as the council approved, the council's grant.
So everybody got it? All right.
There you go. I got it.
All right. So we see the proposal there, we see the fee. If there are no major questions at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve that service contract.
One thing, I think Mary was interested in is true. In the upcoming year, if you do hire a, we're gonna have people like Lori Strike, and Lori Jager, and Ellen, all participate in preparing this report. So there'll be no confusion about where, what numbers come from where. And Lori Jager's, we'll be sure, come. Matter of fact, Ellen is too. But I've already agreed to be more.
Just, just to clarify, so they would, they would work in preparing the documentation that you would then audit? So there's, there's still that independence, there's still that separation.
The management discussion and analysis, and that's the place. That, that was brought up by the SCANSB thirty-four back in two thousand and four. I was doing that for ten years before that. One of the things is just a letter by the administrator in front of the report saying, this is the kind of highlights of the year. And you would almost like to put something in there. Right now, if they said about as boring a place as you can, and boring, but
Boring, but accurate, we'll take.
Yeah, yeah, but the, the interesting.
So we have a, so we have a motion then to accept the proposal?
We do not at this point.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So you stating the fee is seventy nine, seven thousand nine hundred?
This is, this is to you, Michael.
The, the fee is seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Well, if our city clerk, our deputy clerk, and the woman that the city clerk is hiring to assist with some financial issues are doing, how much of the work are they doing? What percentage?
I, I can answer a portion of that. And Lori, you can correct me on anything else. In last year, when, when we were going through this, the city is responsible for the, the letter that Mr. Pofol just referred to, summarizing our activities and, and the city is responsible to provide the documentation. We would be with the other firm we were with, and this. So we are responsible to provide the documentation. He's responsible to audit it. So there's an independence. But we would be doing that with any audit firm that we would have. We would provide that documentation. So, so the exact cost, I don't know how much Lori Jager will be involved in that. But Ellen and Lori Strike would be doing that, no matter what firm we hired.
Mary, I think we should do all the same things, quite frankly. I, I, what, what I'm saying is, is that after I get done the management discussion and analysis, I can give it to Lori, and there'd be improvements, improvements to it.
My, my, my question was based on the fact that we've got the seventy-nine fifty, but I had heard that our staff was going to be more involved in, in the process. So when I listen to that, I hear we're more involved. That's less work that's being done by Mr. Pofol.
No.
So, okay, well, and that's, I'm just trying to clarify. So, all right, thank you.
I think, I think clarification, last year when we had Ellen doing this, it wasn't clear that was the expectation. She was to provide the information.
Okay.
And so, in the confusion, we had to provide her with a list, please do this. Where normally that was part of the process. I think in the interim, we missed something there.
We did have an oddity the last year, that we'd lost our administrator, and Ellen had to take over.
Yeah, so that, that was part of it. So you're just clarifying that.
She came in and helped her continue to keep the book. That's not gonna be necessary, 'cause I gotta feel that I'll be looking up good without my head. But that's the reason why we, I caused the confusion, because I jumped, I had to jump on it right away and make sure she, she, she put everything in the right place. And by God, we did. And by God, we had that audit done by January thirty-first. So it was a miracle, quite frankly.
And Mary.
But it's a confused.
Just, just to confirm, I, I checked with Lori, and that is accurate, my statements.
All right. I just, you know, I, I guess I wasn't clear on what that meant, if that means we are doing more work and less work for Mr. Pofol, should that be reflected? But if, if it's the same, okay, that's fine.
Anybody else have questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'm just wondering, since, you know, Lori's still getting, getting used to things, if, if she's comfortable with us making a decision on the audit or not? Or you'd like to maybe table it for a month or two?
No, I'm very comfortable with it.
We, we have had this discussion.
Okay.
In, in the transition after, you know, when Lori was gone last month at the council meeting, so we've talked about what happened there and what she'd like to see going forward, working with Lori Jager and with Ellen, this is her choice.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor? And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Mr. Pofol for our 2019 audit.
I second.
All right. As stated in the proposal, fee not to exceed $7,950. All right, any other discussion?
Yes, Lori doesn't like the job, but she could be next year. She'll know. I think that we're still in a transitional period, so I don't think that would be a wise decision. But yeah, when if you do decide-
All right, we're good, we gotta make our vote here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we got a motion and a second? Any other further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we're good again.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainey.
If there, I would move that we council pass the consent agenda, items I through F.
So item, yeah, do we need to-
Mr. Mayor.
We have to-
No.
Mayor and councilmembers, Resolution 2019-51.
Yeah.
Since that has been put in the packet, we, the office has been made aware of some changes in the ownership of the, of one of the bar restaurants and the bottle shop. And that would be Northwood's Bar and Grill and Burns Bottle Shop. So we will not be able to approve those liquor licenses tonight. The rest are all good and ready to be approved though.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainey.
I would amend my motion to remove Northwood's Bar and Grill and Burns Bottle Shop from the consent agenda and pass E through F minus Northwood's Bar and Burns Bottle Shop.
All right, motion?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none?
I'm confused. Approval of liquor license renewal for Bill Suparet?
Three, two beer.
Oh.
So obviously, that's not where you're getting your beer.
No, not taking my beer out there.
Yes, they do have a liquor license.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Do we need this?
Do we?
Are you starting with the bills?
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay. Cool.
Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council items. So who put on revisiting the approved feasibility study?
That was the deputy clerk, it was in her circular file to add back to the agenda this month.
So what I would like to do is, I'm gonna table that. People have been invited to a posted gathering on Friday to go out and look at the roads. First and foremost, the ones that Joe is proposing in item B here, that we would like to fix this year. Thus, we have that investment that we transfer to the Road Improvement Fund. So we can decide what needs to be done this year and what we need to do in preparation for next year. And then take a look at some of the roads that are on this list that we might have done next year versus Rogers Lake or some others. I think that the other thing that we need to discuss as a council is deciding when we're doing a road, say Garnett, that we're doing this year. Taking a look, doing a better job of looking north, southeast, and west of those roads. There's a small street right next to Garnett, Marvel Street, that probably would have been a good time to do this year. And there's Garnett south of Norris Lake Road. It's a little cul-de-sac that would have been a perfect time to do at the same time as North Garnett. So what we want to do is, before we decide on next year's roads, I think we need to evaluate how effectively we did this year and then decide which roads make most sense, which residents want them most, and which ones are a good investment of our money. So I would like to table this feasibility study on those five until we decide whether that's really where we want to go next year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I've got my glasses on, but you look-
I know, you don't, I can tell.
But you look busy.
Do we need one of these? Mr. Mayor. Just, I guess, a point of inquiry. Is it really tabling or is it just pulling this item?
Well, pulling it, we don't have a motion, and it's just pulling it until after we decide from our road trip on Friday what we really want to do.
We're not necessarily gonna focus on those specific items. We're gonna look at what's our, what are our priorities for 2019?
Correct.
And that's what we're gonna go forward with, so.
Yeah. And I would say we are going to have to have thorough discussions on funding. And because the numbers that you see on the feasibility studies, I will speculate aren't gonna be anywhere close. Because Coon Rapids was just in the paper, they had their three miles or two and a half miles worth of roads they're doing for $6 million. They came in 20% over plan. And they're still gonna do it because as they realize, costs are going up. Tumines is going up, concrete's going up, labor's going up, if you can find it. Talked with our road guy today and I was out looking at, that was the Verde Valley. They just finished that one up. And they've prepped Rolling Hills and they've prepped Garnett. And they'll be done, if not this week, they aim next week. Next week, they will tear up Palace Street. And they will be doing Old Viking the week after the Fourth of July. So our projects are flowing through. But the county just bid a project, got one bidder. MinDOT just bid a product, project, and they came in 150% over. And they took it, because nobody's bid, they're just, it's very difficult. So people are setting their calendars in fall and winter. So whatever we do next year, we have to figure out what cost effective and timely it is. Because if we wait until next winter, we won't, probably won't be able to find them.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
On Friday, the trip with Joe is to look at the roads that may be in the future?
Two things. One, these ones that are on B here, that he, the spring ones, he wants to do this year. It's in your packet, you've got some pictures of roads that have collapsed on us. And we need to do some interim repair before we do long-term repair. And then to go out and take a look at potentials for next year. One of the areas we want to go through is, if you haven't been down to Rogers Lake, this would be a good time to go down and see those roads. Those, many of those residents have been asking us for a long time. And it might behoove us to take a look at what can we do this year in preparation for that? Maybe move that up? Because that was two years down the road? On the plan?
On the plan, it was, yeah, it was 21.
So if people are asking for it, it might be, might make sense. So it's a combination of these five roads that Joe's looking at and then, and then other roads that we might consider. And then I think when we do, we want to take a look, similar thing to Krypton. It's on one of these feasibility studies here, this was Krypton. But we didn't do the three, the cul-de-sac and end of Krypton. Those are things we don't want to do again. If we're in the neighborhood, let's do the neighborhood. So is everybody okay with holding off on this until we?
So we do want a trip?
So I know that's probably not convenient for you. Is anybody else planning on Friday?
I am.
Everybody, Joe, you?
I'm tentative. It just happens to be one of the biggest contracts that we have are due on Friday. And if I, I gotta see how the next two days go.
If you can make it-
What's the time on Friday?
Eight o'clock.
I can make that. I wasn't going to because of company, but I will.
And if you can't, we will get you the notes. Hi, Joe. Don't mess with work.
Especially that contract.
Yeah, your statement won't cover that loss. All right, so we'll move on from that, discuss spring road issues and repair.
Don't miss one there.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'll have you ready.
So are we gonna push the, are we gonna continue? Continue the repair?
Thank you for the treats.
Option that Joe submitted, is that gonna be continued to July then? Or are we gonna decide on Friday?
Well, that's our discussion, I guess. What can be done this year? Will we put some money aside? We don't know the asphalt cost here. Joe is estimating approximately $38,000 for city maintenance department to do the prep work. But this is, this is not included, the blacktop.
Right, and there's potential for other repairs to come along with that.
Yeah, and so one of the things that we want to make sure that with Old Viking, Joe's been working on the drainage issues this week. Want to make sure our culvert's in good shape and our drainage issues are resolved. So before we get started on something else that would distract from that, I want to make sure that everything we need for Old Viking is in place before we do this. Or is being taken care of.
So, potential if we had to get all that stuff done by, well, if they're starting on Old Viking by in the beginning of July, then we would have the rest of the month to make sure all that's in order. I guess, I'm just, is it, are we gonna run into timing issues? I don't know if Lori's talked to Joe about that, where if there's other stuff to be started on, if they get done with Old Viking, or?
As far as for the maintenance?
Like the maintenance or these projects? Or do we need to, if there's a timing of it all and getting that done so that with the, I mean, I'm assuming it's do the repair work, let it settle for a while, and then come back this fall and fill it in with blacktop?
Yeah, I think, I think what we're gonna have to find out is what, who's available to blacktop? And if anybody has any time in their schedule for it. Joe's, my discussion with Joe was, this prep work can sit. You know, once we've got it in there, it can sit waiting for blacktop. But if blacktop's available, as soon as he's done, I think we're okay to go too. We want to confirm that, that this doesn't have to sit. But I think it really has everything to do with Joe and Lori figuring out who's available and scheduling it. And so I would say if we have it by September, I'd be happy. If we can do it anytime before that, it'd be good.
I just don't want to hold anything up if we're waiting another month on it, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
As far as this?
As far as the current needs that need to be made. I mean, I've certainly seen Krypton and would go, yeah, that-
Well, here's the deal. You know, in the last, in the consent agenda, we had to pull out two items because of change of ownership on the liquor licenses. Those liquor licenses have to be in place by the end of June or they're shut down in their liquor business until they are. So I'm going to speculate that as soon as background checks are completed, they will ask for a special meeting. We can do the road tour on Friday and we could include in that special meeting the decision to release Joe in this. I don't want Joe working on this until I know that Halis and Old Viking are taken care of.
Okay, yeah, I just don't want it to hold anything else.
But, but that being said, we don't have to wait till the July meeting either. We will have an opportunity to have a special meeting
Okay.
to clear Joe to do this.
Yeah, okay.
And maybe by that time, Lori, we can find out what the likelihood of the tumines availability and installers would be.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I'm confused here, so you need to help me. Don't we have to have meetings for all these people to come in?
Nope, they're not being assessed. This is, these are repairs.
Okay.
So these are simply, the road's bad in a spot. So we're gonna take X number of feet and fix just that part.
Okay.
And that'll be city cost.
All right.
And that's the monies that Mike was talking about, we transferred to the road bridge fund.
Right.
That's gonna be where some of that comes from.
All right, that makes sense.
Well, that's where it all comes from. That's part of the reason we put money over there, so that we weren't cash strapped if something like this happened. When you get five roads that are broken down, that's an unusual issue. And the reason we're doing the overlays is so we have fewer of these.
I'm good.
All right. All right. So A and B will hold off until we visit our roads on Friday. And we'll go on to the comp plan review. Let me just throw in the item D that I put on here. It's real short, but the Met Council has sent out their new population estimates. And as of 2018, April 1st, this came out. The annual population estimate for Now Then is 4,758 people, 1,525 households. And this is as of April 1st, 2018. The average size of the household is 3.096 persons. I don't know what an 096 person looks like, and I don't hope to ever find out. So we are officially, by their estimate of April 1st, 2018, 400 and, or 248 residents from the Magic 5,000.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainey.
What happens at 5,000?
Yeah.
At 5,000, we become eligible for state funds primarily for roads, road aid. And the, there are some other things that we become officially no longer a small city. And so we qualify for state funding primarily in state aid roads. And it's significant. Now, the difference between what the legislature can give to us, aid to small cities for roads, right now, we can use it on any road if we get funding from them. Once we get state aid roads money, it can only be on state aid roads. So this is gonna figure in, you know, one of the roads we were looking at for next year was Jasper. Well, Jasper would qualify as a state aid road. So we could get funding for that. So if we're this close to state aid funding, we want to take that into consideration and not do a road that would be state aid funded just before we get state aid. That being said, when you get state aid funding, you have to build the roads to state aid standards. They're wider, they're, they're a little more rigorous, a little more expensive when you build the state aid road standards. But it's compensated because you get some monies for it. But, you know, next year is the census year. So it's going to be, you know, at least a year, maybe two years before we find out whether we hit that number or not. Also depends on some of these developments that may be coming into town here in the special district on 47 and a few other large lots that are potentially being sold. Could expedite that. Economy slows down this fall, it could slow that down. So I'm not banking on it until we see an actual census number and we get an approved budget through the legislature. So it's not immediate, but it's closer than last estimate we got.
Right, so it went up since the last?
Yeah, it went up 315.
In a year?
Well, no, last time, those, that 444.3 has been there for, I don't know how often they're doing this, but that's been there forever.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I, I have some of those other ones from the, that are from the Met Council. That's a, I think that's done nearly.
I think they, Liz had them, used a 4600 number in here, if I remember.
It was approaching 46, yeah.
So, yeah.
All right, I understand correctly, it's gone up 315 since our signs went up. Probably just over 100. I think it was 46 something this year. Probably just over a hundred, I think it was forty-six something last year.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Greenberg.
To Ms. Stright, have we received anything from the state? The small city assistance for roads was in the bonding bill, in the final bill. Have we seen anything from the state as to what the numbers are gonna be?
I haven't seen anything.
I've been trying to watch, and I'm not able to find anything at this point.
Usually the league will send that out in their newsletter, and I didn't see it in this month's newsletter, it came out.
Interesting to see what it is.
I do know that because we're as high as we can get on the small cities without going over the Five Thousand, we get the maximum amount, but I don't know what the numbers are using this year. Typically, that goes right into our road funds. Any other questions on the population? Looking for people to help with the census next year, too.
Mr. Mayor, do they still go door to door for census like they used to?
You know, they, they, local government officials meeting, we had a lot of conversation on this. They do only if they exhaust their other means. So they're asking people to send in.
Yes.
And so they said it'll be a very small percentage that actually have to go door to door. But they wanna make sure that they do count everybody. And sometimes it's hard, some people don't wanna be counted, some people don't understand you're counting everybody but the dog. And some people wanna count the dog, and some people don't wanna count the kids. But they're doing everything they can electronically. They can do electronically, they're doing it in letter form, and if they can't do that, then they're going door to door. But they are, there are a lot of opportunities to help with that, so. I do have some information on that if you wanna participate. All right, so now we get to... Officially, I did hear from Kim Kotke, Kim Mueller-Kotke. They do not want any part of their land designated commercial. Clarified three times, and she clarified back three times.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Greenberg.
I also talked with Kim and Gary. Discussed how, under commercial or industrial, their taxes would not change until someone actually bought the land and owned it. Some of their concerns were if the land adjacent to them was also commercial, and then he sold, would roads go through their property? It seemed to be one of their bigger concerns. But I got the same reflection, neither of those parties seemed interested at this time in going commercial.
Yeah, there was some discussion early in the year, there might be an opening there, but those plans fell through, and so they're staying put. At this point, they've communicated emphatically they do not want it designated changed. And I communicated that to Liz.
So we are, well, go to the land use plan here. So south side of 22, we've added some commercial industrial. Now the challenge will be, you know, what's what as far as zoning? Because the intent is always to have your commercial along 22 highly visible, whereas you like to have industrial setback aways from the main road. Doesn't have to be, but that's...
One of the things we learned in the industrial park back here is those that have a commercial enterprise and are reliant on being easy to find or visible when people come by, they have service. As opposed to industrial where your customers and your suppliers basically know where you're at, they find you. Commercial is, you know, sightlines are important. And we found people that have commercial operations back here because we also didn't have any monuments out on 5 or 22. People don't know they're back there. So if you're running a garage or some service oriented business, you're not getting drive-by traffic, and nobody knows you're back there. So your advertising is different than if you're out here on the main drag. So having commercial, two things, commercial makes sense up front where people can see it. Secondly, I think we need to be cognizant of what our main street looks like when people come by.
Right.
We don't want it looking like some industrial main streets. That zoning will be important.
Absolutely. And the other thing to note about land use is I did talk to Judy Olson today. And they're up here on 47, north of the crematorium. And they are willing to designate the front, forty-eight or thirty, whatever it is, industrial or commercial slash industrial as it's shown on our land use plan.
So that's the forty minus the crematorium?
Correct.
Anybody see where that is?
I'm assuming it's the rest of the forty?
Here?
Just north of what, where it currently is?
Yeah, so you can see that, the very top of the commercial industrial diagonal stripe there?
Yeah.
In that forty, there's a small, the bottom left corner?
Yeah.
That's the crematorium.
Okay.
And so the rest of that forty is what we're talking about here. They own behind that as well.
Yes.
But they don't want that included, so just that front remaining forty.
And I believe that's...
And that actually gives us quite a bit, considering the...
It does.
The limitation on some of our opportunities here.
Right, yeah, I'm a little concerned that we don't have anything really available at 22 and 5 area, but I'm glad we have a couple of property owners willing to sell over on 47. And I, you know, increasingly, I still get calls, I had another one last week, of looking for manufacturing space. And I'm always, you know, upfront with people, and I ask, you know, if there's, are you willing to, you know, buy a larger parcel and split? You know, and chat about those options, so it's all good. It's, it'll happen. Just need the right fit. And, let's see. Go to, this is what I'm calling a city center concept, but really just an aerial photo of the 22 and 5 intersection there. But it shows the transition area, well, first, the addition of the land along the south side of 22, which is Maurits Property General. And then on the south side of that, the transition area between the existing RRA development and what we're showing is commercial industrial. So the way it's left is that we really don't know what this transition will be. I mean, it could be as simple as, you know, the required buffer along the south side of those commercial industrial lots. It could also be a different alternative type of development that we have no idea what it will look like. We don't have any zoning in place right now to accommodate anything different, but it is something that we could look at. So it will basically stay zoned RRA until we have something to work with. And then that may or may not require a comprehensive plan amendment later, depending on what density we're working with. And whether it's P and D, or whether it's just a straight zoning district. So there's a kind of a lot of questions, but that's okay. What I like about this map is that it does show the road extensions. As part of the frontage road plan and as part of dealing with Anoka County on the upgrade of 22, it's important to know where our intersections can and cannot be as far as the county spacing goes. They have spacing guidelines. So the extension of Iguana across 22 to the south will happen. And then further down, right at the Mueller property line with McCray's, there'll be a north-south road there. I labeled it Puma Street, which aligns with what is shown on the, you know, the naming guidelines. So... And then, as you see in green, also the McCray piece and the Landrew piece, which are kind of on the edge of our commercial industrial and residential zones. Those could go either way as far as what type of development. Could end up being some transition type of land use.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Greenberg.
Liz, the McCray piece right next to Mueller piece, that dotted line going horizontal, would that conceivably become a road? This was the concern shared with me, that dotted line become a road while it's still being farmed to access the McCray piece? With future planning in mind of throughputs, inputs, outputs, whatever? That would be their concern, suddenly their farmland. Now that it's own commercial, McCray's been developed, now that we need a road to future look, would that happen?
No, very, very doubtful. So what the red line is indicating is I dotted that in hopes that we could designate that as commercial industrial.
You're talking about the black line, right?
Well, the black line is Puma Street, right? So that would go right adjacent to the property, that wouldn't affect it.
Right, that one, let's say, yeah, if it were, let's say it were designated commercial industrial, McCray developed first, they would have to plot the portion of Puma Street to access their property. There's also potentially an east-west street between Iguana and that future Puma Street that may cut through.
Do you have that, that's on the?
Yes, I have that.
Backage road?
I'll show you here.
There is a concept plan for the frontage roads in that area that... So you can see, that's Puma Street, the red lines around it there?
Yep.
So the concept would be to come through from Iguana, north of the, or the edge, between the nursery here and the storage units. So come 199th through to the Hollenbeck, what was the Hollenbeck Farm? North of the storage units, the new storage units. So see the old storage units up there and the, up there?
Yeah.
And the new storage units down right below that?
Right here, yep.
Well, that's the Hollenbeck Farm.
Well, yeah, you're right, a little south of that.
So that's the concept road through the Mueller property.
That heavy dotted line?
Yep.
So Puma Street's here, yep.
So until they sell, that's a concept.
Okay.
We have no plans on imposing that road through private property at this point.
Okay, so if McCray were to be bought out and someone built there, let's just say it was a Subway sandwich, that heavy dotted line would not be made as long as the Mueller's land was still agricultural.
That portion down there just below the cursor?
Yep.
Right there could be. The developer, if they wanted to come in off this new Puma Street, they could come in off there and go into a Cray's property. And potentially even that diagonal, or that triangle there in the corner of Mahatka's property, on just that side of the wetland, they could come up there. But if a developer would be responsible for that road?
Yeah, and that's right on the edge of that property, of the Mueller property, right?
Right.
So it's not actually cutting through it. I guess this conversation is for my benefit, if I have a conversation with them again, to say, really, there wouldn't be any road going through your property until you sold it commercial.
And then the developer would be responsible. If, it wouldn't go through until you sold it, and the developer wants to put in that road.
Mr. Mayor, then, if that borders Mahatka's, do they have to give permission for that road to go through?
Well, again, if they decided they wanted to sell off a portion of their land, to get to it, they would have to pay for a road to go in, yes.
So the road would go from 22 over to, all the way over to 100, 201st?
No.
Mahatka's?
Well, eventually, Puma would go all the way. But it's only going as far as the property goes. So if it's just McCray's we're dealing with, then it stops here at...
I see, because you don't have access to it.
And since Mahatka's aren't adjacent or contiguous to the commercial at this point, without Mueller's land?
Yeah, I don't see where they border Mueller, Mahatka. You said they border Mueller.
Right here.
That's Mahatka on the left and Mueller on the right.
That's the line, right where Liz is drawing.
Yeah, I know, but I thought that that was owned by Thompson.
Just that little piece up there, right there, that's the only thing Thompson owns.
Oh, I see.
The house and the land, just either side of it that's been tilled over. Everything else is Mahatka.
Yeah, this is all Mahatka.
And Mueller's on the other side of Thompson?
Almost, yeah.
Oh, I get it.
And actually, I'm not sure if Thompson even goes over to the line with Mueller. Maybe he does. I think there's a portion of Mahatka's land right there, 'cause it's posted, no trespassing.
I think there's an access right there, yeah.
Yeah, there's an access.
Some of that land on both sides of him, I think he owns.
Yes. What he's tilled up for vegetables, that's his. If you look just to the east of his tilled ground and Mueller's driveway, there's a small section that says no trespassing, that's an access through to Mahatka's land.
Yeah, I know, they got a couple of signs.
So technically, Thompson doesn't go right up to the Mueller line?
Okay.
Just about, but not even.
I see, okay, I get it.
But that would be, the future there, if Mueller's decided to sell, that would be our new industrial park, where Mueller's are. Potentially, with probably some transition homes on the north. And you'd have Puma Street going all the way through to 201st.
So Mueller's land would be industrial, and the other side of Mahatka's land could be residential? Is that what you're saying?
Could be. And you could have the north part of Mueller's land be residential?
What?
You could have the north part of Mueller's land be residential. So that's wide open.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Greenberg.
Liz, the McCray piece, do you know how many acres that is about?
Fifteen.
Would you be inclined to go straight across fifteen or the Mueller piece as well?
Yes.
That's the red line you see on this, this one in your book?
Right.
So that's about fifteen acres?
Yep.
Yes.
So if Mueller's would concede that portion of it, it doesn't change their taxes until the use changes. But that would allow that to be contiguous to McCray's. And if they wanna develop it, fine, if they don't, fine, it can stay that way. But this way, if McCray wanted to develop on the other side, he could with access through that potential Puma Street. And it could leave them unaffected. If they ever wanted to sell that, they needed, wanted the cash for it and sold it commercially. There's access off this new Puma Road, and it still has a buffer to their house. If they wanna farm it, until they can't farm it anymore, doesn't change.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockton.
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, if you want to guide this the way it's shown here, you have every right to do that. You don't need their permission.
To do what?
To guide the land this way.
To, to declare it commercial, uh, guided? Like we have with the red lines on that map?
We call it guided when we're dealing with land use and then we call it zoned when we're dealing with zoning. So, um, they can still use it agriculturally for as long as they wish. I mean, we've, as a courtesy contacted these people. If, you know, if you feel that this is for the betterment of the city to designate this as commercial industrial, you may do that, um, without their permission.
Mr. Mayor, so the city can take someone's property and zone it commercial without their permission?
Yes.
Wow.
You're not taking their property, you're just saying that it's guided that way, so you would not be able to build residential houses on that portion of the land.
Oh, but you're not going to build commercial there without their permission?
Their property.
Okay.
And if they want to sell it.
It's going to be commercial if they want to sell it, if you've guided it that way.
Now, if there were a house on it and it was being used residentially, that could continue forever. But if there's nothing built on it, the only thing that could be built on it is commercial or industrial.
Once you've guided it. Okay, okay, I get it.
Mr. Mayor?
But they can farm it, they can do everything else with it except to build houses on it. Councilmember Rainbow?
Uh, so, so we have that, I'm, it's a, something is a forty there of Mueller's. And if we were to guide the, the front fifteen of it, who pays the cost for, for splitting that?
It doesn't, it, no, we don't split it at all.
Okay, so it still stays one PID?
Right.
And it, but in our books, the front fifteen is commercial?
Yep.
And it doesn't cost anybody anything?
Right, so we can split zone the property or show it part residential and part commercial industrial.
Similar to the Wagner over here? It's, it's been unchanged until he decided to build. Now the front is commercial, the back is.
Right, that's where they're next to.
But that's the way it's guided. But it hasn't changed taxes, hasn't changed PID's or anything else. Correct?
Correct. Uh, but Joel, it's very rare that a city would go in and purchase land for a road. Um, they have to show that it's a community-wide benefit. And for such a short stretch in this location, I don't know that that would really apply. You know, you'll see some of the bigger cities, um, you know, putting in large stretches of collector's streets and that when they're getting a lot of development, usually, you know, Ramsey or the cities that are sewed. But I don't, I don't see that happening.
Because it makes sense to, to keep the sewer continuous.
You have to pay for that and, right, open it up for more development to justify, yeah, extending services and...
You know, just, just for clarification on this, if you can publish this. And this is how it exists today, you've got the city hall at the city offices.
That's, yeah, and that's, I know, and I need to contact the county about that because that comes from the GIs.
And we've got the Nowland Community Building is this.
Right, and see, that's partly where.
People get lost up here.
Maps, Apple Maps.
Well, people are very confused because...
I know, we just heard, who was it the other day said the same? Did you have to count?
Yeah, we get people coming here a lot looking for the city offices.
Yeah, and the, the big problem is when people come to City Hall, they go to City Offices, nobody's over there. There's nothing that says you're in the wrong place. You just got a sign here saying, "City Offices has moved," so if they came here for that, they knew where to go.
Right.
But there's nothing there that says, "No, this is not City Hall."
We should almost call it either.
And I didn't realize it's on the, the county map.
I, I did actually go into Apple Maps and put in a request to change it because that was the same way, so wherever they're getting their data from. I, I basically said, "City Hall's over there." And that's, and that's the city offices, so whoever they're getting their actual data from is, they're all, they're all that way, so.
Well, I'll assign, I assign the addresses so I can send a form and then they'll change that. At least, uh, locally it'll be right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbow?
On that note, I also sent you some other locations in your booklet where it's.
And that's partly why, you know, it's confusing, yeah. I always, I always clarify by saying the council chambers are here. You know, it's more of a community building, I don't know.
Poor people, the GPS's end up in Anoka anyways, so. I will say, anybody, if you ever find a copy of the state, hard copy of the map, I was promised by MnDOT we would be back on the map. I didn't give it in time for Harvey's funeral, but they promised me, but it wasn't until this year's maps. Harvey's been asking for that for ten years and...
For what?
When we became a city, for some reason, they decided not to put Nowland on state maps anymore. So you have Anoka and you have St. Francis and you have.
That's true, that's true.
You just say borough township.
Yeah. But, and, and actually, they, they did, there, there are some maps that said Nowland. And then they just disappeared. And Harvey would ask repeatedly, "Get us back on the map." And every year at State Care, I go to MnDOT's display and make my request. And this year I got a response back saying, "Your request has been granted." And it'll be this next map coming out, Nowland will be back on the maps.
Woo-hoo. And it'll say now and then.
Yeah.
Or now and later, that's what they always tell me.
Be wrong, but we'll be.
They'll say now or later or something, yeah.
So...
They'll say the city next, Hales River.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
Is everybody okay with me including this map? We can, um, I would obviously take the property owner name off there. Um, and then, you know, change the lines accordingly if I need to for whatever we decide. I think it's helpful to just give the general kind of layout for that area west of Nowland Boulevard. I don't know if City Center is the appropriate name, although, I mean, we have added a City Center section in our policies.
We kind of like downtown Nowland.
Downtown, you like downtown better?
I do too.
I do too.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay. Downtown Nowland.
It gets a good smirk.
It's a good laugh, yeah.
Uptown, downtown.
A laugh.
Chuckle.
See, that's downtown, yeah, I'm uptown.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
I mean, do we have any plan to get something along this road other than storage units and stuff like that?
That's going to be in the zoning portion of this, so we have to get down to what, what do we allow on there?
Yeah, because this is going to be, this, this and five are how people see our city.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's also forty-seven, but, but yes. This, this, how this develops will be people's impression, because most people know Nowland from cutting through Malk River to try and get over to Forest Lake area. And, and every time I talk to somebody, "Oh, I just drove through your town, it's coming through on 22," so.
Yeah, it's almost 22.
The zoning will be, will be critical.
Yeah.
In fact, Liz and I talked today about, seems every time I drive by the storage units, more trees are gone.
Right.
And I thought intentionally they're leaving the woods there.
I know, that's what we've, Ruth said that too.
Liz is checking in on that.
And secondly?
So that, that's going to be the discussion we have in zoning, what, what can go in there?
Yeah.
Along the road and what, what is the required appearance? Whether it's architectural or birmingham or signage, what do we want that main, our main drags to look like? And that's why when, when Mr. Wagner was coming forward here, it was important to, to make certainly understood these, the portion of this building that faced Nowland Boulevard was under the commercial regulations and therefore more stringent than industrial. And why, why his intention to have a water feature and, and landscaped areas was important because, you know.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question, but I don't know. How about the A and, A and E's or A?
A and B.
And all the, they would keep adding more and more, um, things, vehicles?
You know, and, and...
On, on the side there, right by, when you go by on the road, it gets, it's getting more and more filled in with those types of things.
That is a, an industrial area.
Yes.
And our mistake was not designating retail or commercial along the arterial, Nowland Boulevard. And, and we have exposure there, they are supposed to have a fence, um, that hides some of that. Proper, the problem is the two lots they have north of them are higher than the road area. So even if you put up a fence down near the road, which is a real low area of their property?
Right.
You're not going to hide anything that's in there.
I mean, the building is very nice.
Building's very nice and, and...
But now we're getting more and more machinery or whatever the words are.
And, yeah, as a city, we could encourage the owners to plant trees. And you'll notice that the new trucking firm, to protect themselves in the back of their property from the concrete business behind them, went out and bought beautiful big evergreens. So we could encourage the owners to invest along that line. We have not required it at this point. But it is something where if we're going to zone our arterials to have an appearance standard, we can't go back and force them to do it, but we could encourage them to do it.
Ask them if they consider it.
And if, if they could find some trees like...
Yeah, they just come up.
Like the Sundells did?
Yeah.
And Sundells say there's more available, then we could encourage them to.
All right, I just was noticing that the other day, I thought maybe we could make it a little better looking.
That was, that was part of the deal, that was Mr. Wagner's property. And he traded because, uh, the Allwellings bought Harvey's old used car, used equipment lot. And they traded properties so that they could have adjoining storage. And that's, that's what they need is storage, but unfortunately, it's not storage that really attracted stuff.
No, it'd be nicely, the trees would be perfect, and that would, that would solve it.
Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
One thing you could do is, um, you know, we could update our zoning ordinance, the screening standards, for instance. Maybe we don't want to allow the chain link with the slats, it's a very low-end type of screening. And then see when, and when and if a property comes in, let's say for a building addition, then they're required to comply with the current standards. So at that point, you, you know, kind of work a deal with them on what, what goes in and...
That makes sense.
And if you're, and if you're storing large equipment, then you should have large screening, you know? It may not be possible to screen it completely, but, yeah, it would help to have.
Actually, on the arterials.
Have trees.
Yeah, just on.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbow?
To Ms. Stockman, on the far western corner there, uh, twenty-two and 194th and 195th, what is that red?
Right here?
No, the far, very far west and, yeah.
Yeah, that's not going to be there, that, I had just selected.
Okay, so that, just ignore that?
Yeah, just ignore it.
Okay, all right.
That will go away.
Thank you.
Not the subdivision, just the red line?
No, just the red line, yeah. I think, I don't remember having any conversation on anything over there.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, the, uh, the people on, uh, so that cul-de-sac down there off 194th Plain, is that? Has that got a different name?
Mm-hmm, yeah, Driscoll.
That's Driscoll?
This is Driscoll here. So, yeah, this right here is the Olson's.
No, I'm talking about 194th, uh, east of Baugh.
Oh, over here.
Where Puma, where the road going over to Puma would be?
Over here, yes, yes.
Because those, those people could be surprised at that end if there was a continuation of that road.
Oh, down here?
Yeah. The dotted line over to Puma.
Well, but see, that would only be to their benefit, um, because they could split off these back, uh, the back part of their lots potentially.
Yeah, I'll tell you, that flag lot there at the end, they like their privacy. Because they live, everything south is farm field. And everything, um, north is wetland.
But this could also, you know, turn here and we kind of need to cross this ditch or wetland at the best spot.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is, it's just always, it's one of those, if people are going to say, "I thought this would be here forever." Um, on the east side, over there behind, between the church and the Mahatka homestead? So all the lighter area that's upland? Potentially built?
Yes, the lighter area is upland. Right. Where is this? I'm going here, on the east end. So it'd be a little challenging to get streets in here, but I, you know, it's doable. And this is the, the farmhouse that had the fire.
By the church, you mean?
Yeah.
South of the church, yeah.
You would know, you would know it, here's Happy Corner?
Mm-hmm, I know that.
She had to get her references right. Happy Corner, oh, it's right in the cross.
Right there. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
Is, uh, the Greenberg property zoned commercial?
Yes, up here along 22, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Currently commercial.
And how about Edie's?
Yes.
Okay.
Along the corner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
On the property Linda Blake was just talking about.
Corner?
Edie's or Greenberg's?
I'm looking at the, uh, planning and zoning meeting we had about the fence that's going over there? On the Birkins property?
Up here?
Where's that?
Oh, Wagner?
Wagner.
Wagner's is on.
Right on the corner.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So the fence here along that residential piece?
Right on the corner where we, um, take a right on Old Viking to go to, uh, the Thresh and Show.
Right, yeah.
So anyways, there's that proposed fence that was in the planning and zoning meeting?
Mm-hmm.
With the Versetta stone sample?
Right.
So could that kind of fence be like the new standard for Nowland?
Well, the, the, um, that's an expensive fence. It could be. I think what Planner Stockman was talking about is actual, what can we do to protect view? And trees are preferable to fences?
Sure.
Or a combination thereof. But the, the lowest end we have is the chain link with the slats. Not real attractive over a period of time. And actually, if you look at ours over here in the city lot, it really doesn't hide things anyway. You can see everything is back in the city lot. So trees are preferable. If you take a look at the building here between our city properties and next door maintenance yard, by allowing them all those trees out front, you really don't see other than looking through their gate and the, um, east side here, what's going on in there. Which, by the way, when we gave them the IUP, there was fencing requirements.
For the?
For the woodworkers.
Oh, yes, they're supposed to, they'll, they have a year.
They've got something on the south side and, south and then the east.
Yeah, you're right, they were going to put up a, some fabric type stuff, we, I believe. But they, that we agreed to. I'll have to look at it.
We came, we came up with a compromise, it was, they were going with a higher quality fence if we required less of it. Because originally, we're talking about fabric around the whole thing, but because the area that faces the park was kind of home-like?
You're right.
We, we, we left that off, but they went with a higher quality fence from the building over to the fence. And then north along there, I think it was going to be.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Possibly a cedar fence.
I'll call back.
So you're going, you're going to add the Olson property?
So I'll add the Olson property. on 47 and then.
Well, pencil this in as a concept plan for downtown.
Right, so do you want to change this land use plan to include McCray? Or not? That would be one question. And then the other question is over on 47. We had discussed potentially removing this area down here next to the Curry if we were able to gain, you know, 40 acres up north here.
I think that makes sense. Take the 40 acres in the north, approximately 40, and take the the south where it's mostly houses right now up against the. I think that we want to accentuate Ford Brook wherever we can and industrial use just doesn't seem like it.
Right, and we have the residential to the north now, whereas before we had.
Right.
Commercial. So it's sandwiched between residential.
Yeah.
Actually, three sides, so I think it does make sense.
Council, okay with that?
I would say if we've got the replacement piece on the north, then yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't fit any longer on the south end, the southwest.
Okay.
Linda's okay with that, too.
Agreed.
I'm not sure about the, I'm not sure about necessarily committing that this part. I like leaving it right now as conceptual.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to go McCray at this point just because it opens up other issues. I think you let Mueller sit a little bit more and think about that southern 15. And then it's more natural. And because we can do that at any time, if Mueller's conceived the southern 15, then it's a natural contiguous. And it doesn't open us up to other challenges.
But remember, Mr. Mayor, that, I mean, you have to think of your vision to your long term. You know, what if all of a sudden somebody, you know, Mueller sell and they want to put residential right up to Viking Boulevard? You know, then you're stuck because your land use plan is showing residential. And you can't say no. You know, you could always back off if you, for some reason, decide you don't want commercial there. But you can't go the other way either. So, you know, it's a tough call, but it does make the most sense to mirror the commercial on the south side. I don't, you know, know why somebody would want residential that close, you know, at this point after, as the traffic keeps increasing on 22.
Yeah, I think that between the traffic increasing and the, the commercial creeping in on the, on the one side for sure. I, I think there still needs to be conversation further.
Well, it's just good to.
Yeah, and I understand your point that if it's guided, you don't have to fight it.
Right.
And as we found over here on the DeShane property, you can take it back from commercial if you want as well.
Right, yeah.
If you really, really want a house on 22.
Right, you could go either way. But we had the discussion and that's good to document that, so. Then what I think I'll do is show the the part that matches the actual land use plan in solid and then just leave that part dotted like it is. Okay, so one more question before I forget is you'll notice the document, comprehensive plan document was kind of designed as a single-sided document. I mean, the majority of people are going to be looking at it online or, well, online probably. If you want that changed for some reason, I mean, I can, I can do every other page opposite so that the page numbers make sense, but it's about 100 pages, I think. 103 pages. Does it matter to anyone or should we just? Most people are only going to print, you know, a page here or there, I think. It's not like they're.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
Ms. Stockman, just when I was going through this again today, so page 77, 76 and 77 are in backwards.
Oh, yeah.
Unless, for some reason, maybe just the number?
Oh, well, see, we're missing, well, oh, I see.
It should say, 76 should say City Center map and.
It was just reversed.
77 is.
74 is off to 72. Let's see, 71, 72.
Oh, they're okay. 70, the even numbers should be on the right-hand side.
76 and 77, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I see. Why didn't I? I made a note to myself and then I went back to that page. I thought, wait a minute.
It's flipped.
So my, my question, a little thing, but since this is our comprehensive plan, the picture's, transportation has a garbage truck. I could find something other than. Anybody got a Bugatti here in town? And then, and then we, on implementation, it's not the best construction picture.
Yeah, we can just flip. We don't have to really weight it to the section necessarily, but.
Yeah, I just, there's so many nice pictures of Now Then. I'd be willing to share a few of beautiful sunrises and sunsets.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I just think whatever pictures we use, they should be identifiable. The features are so small, you can't see what it is. It's just. And then we'll get our newly remodeled corner garage here and our fire hall. We'll place those pictures.
Get it spiffed up?
Look a little more attractive. Did you get the the hitching post at the Bill's Super App?
Hitching post where?
Bill's Super App's got a hitching post for horses.
Oh, no. No, I didn't.
Put that under transportation.
There you go.
One method still allowed.
Still available to residents and Now Theners.
Yes, taking your horse.
Don't forget it Burns Auto has the right number of authorized number of vehicles.
Uh, yeah, I'm on that actually.
I mean, they're in our book here. I just want to make sure they're compliant. Yeah, I think, I think, you know, again, since it's, it's a published thing, it'll be around for 10 years. I would like to see the pictures be more reflective. Even Bills have got the right turn and all those signs. There's a much better view from the other angle. I think we could do some.
Okay. If anyone has any good pictures of the farmer's market or Heritage Festival.
I have, we sent you some.
We have a few. I have a few from farmer's market that.
Oh, we got some good ones for Heritage Festival. Do you want any from Threshing Show?
Yeah, that would be good, too. Actually, I might have one from that.
Did you ever get your Sand Hill Crane photos?
There is one on the cover.
Is that the one that you, did you, did your friend take that?
No, I actually had that one from last year.
I have two in my field every morning.
We only saw two that whole day we were out.
My two are there every day and they're getting closer to my driveway each day. They've been working up from the wetland to the driveway.
Well, here they are, right here.
Yeah.
There's a tomahawk over by Mort's.
And the Now Then sign with the 31 below, that's credited to Ellen. Ellen took that.
These are nice little pictures here on the front of the.
Yeah, I had one doing that.
Those were cute.
Just for reference, the City Hall hat is not the City Hall.
Yeah, that was one of those I said.
There was one other thing I saw today. It's a good thing you've got some nice sky above our, whatever we call this, community center because the building needs a little work.
Yeah, the day we took photos.
Beautiful sky.
Clouds were amazing.
Yeah.
Ms. Stockman. Where is this barn on the bottom row, second in from the left?
I.
Throw it up, bro.
It's where?
I don't even know if I remember that. I took that with my cellphone last fall.
That isn't a wooden silo, is it?
Yes, it is. And Joe knows where it is because he told me to go out.
It's actually on, on the market right now.
Is it on Xena?
It's on the, on the market because I remember them saying, was this cedar? Cedar silo.
Let's hope that someone with a lot of children buy.
What is good and bad to that, though?
I bet you can read it, Xena.
It's pretty red sky you've got, too.
Yeah, I just walked out with a few. Um, okay, well, if you see anything else, just email or call me.
It's on Norris Lake.
Norris Lake?
6101 Norris Lake.
East.
That barn?
Yeah, because it's. Where is Norris Lake? Show it to me.
Because I just saw, I looked at the listing today.
Okay, now how about the one he's always talking about, Rogers Lake? Unless there's a second one.
If you can see down at the very bottom, you can just see the start of Rogers.
And then there's just a little bit we have there.
No, you're good.
Not until you leave.
That's why I was saying wrong.
Did you have any questions for us other than that, just to make sure we weren't changing anything else?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to know, I'm glad you got it before you leave. Yeah, yeah, I called her today because we hadn't met with her about three weeks ago, maybe a month ago. She hadn't called back.
No, you know what? This is a different one.
Anyway, she said she fell asleep on the couch today.
And your portion south on 47?
Yeah, I wasn't, we, that's all.
That's a different one.
Yeah, we got that. She's happy with the way it is.
Yeah, we're staying now it's commercial and then one up north, we've got an industrial and then it's residential.
Residential along the Oak Grove, yeah.
Still thinking about coming in the back end there to Oak Grove?
Still tossing it around, yeah. They got people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, Volunteers of America went through that lot reconfiguration and that's still not recorded. I was going to change the maps to show and it's not recorded yet, so that's kind of. But they had that shakeup over there when, you know, right after that.
Councilmember Rayburn?
And just to Liz again, just to confirm, you'll correct the things that I had emailed you?
I noted those on all my pages, yeah. Yeah, thank you for that.
And then on page, page 24, this is not picky, but between seven, the number seven and eight. The space is larger than the other.
On page 61, the sewer allocation forecast from the Met Council. So their forecast, their forecasted population of 2019, since Met Council's actually come up with numbers that are higher than that, does this ever change before we go to publication here?
No, it has to match what they have online or they won't approve this.
Because online, they've already got 47, 58. This one, they've got, 2020, they've got 45, 90.
I think they have like a date and they just do a cutoff and that's. I'll double check that, but.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Page 62, the map looks like it snowed and that's it.
Yes, we did this one last winter in February.
I'm at the bottom. I see charts and colors and boxes and patterns and then I look up and I see snow.
Because we don't have any of those.
Well, we don't have any wastewater system and that council requires that map be in there, see, so it shows.
Well, we don't have these things.
Right, so that's exactly what the map is showing. We don't have those.
Okay, that's helpful.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, our Shockley, Medwakaton Sioux community is not listed.
I need a white box down there that says February, snowfall, amongst.
Yeah, okay. That explains it. We have none.
Yeah, all those things, order of annexations. Indian communities, those are all.
Well, we had a boom, 1990 to 1999. How's that thing felt?
Any other questions? If there's anything else you need from us.
Good job.
Thank you. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel.
So then next Tuesday is?
Next Tuesday, we'll have this capability here on the screen and I think I'll also print a couple of boards that have the land use map. People can look at it, you know.
Next Tuesday?
What's next Tuesday?
Public hearing. Public hearing for the comp plan.
Okay, that's.
So we're all here at 6 o'clock today?
Uh, 7, we said.
It's before Roden Bridge?
June 18.
There is no Roden Bridge.
There's no Roden Bridge, okay.
June 18. Blue of Roden Bridge. That's already canceled.
Did we ever get, I don't think we ever get notifications.
We did send it, we, Lori and I called Jeff last week because, you know, we had to have the notice out last week.
Okay, all right. All right, so comp plan, open, comp plan open house?
Right, official public hearing for the documents.
Okay, so we go over this document if people come?
Yeah, we just chat about it, land use. They, if they, if they show up and have questions about how we, you know, designated areas, but there aren't a ton of changes and, you know, the changes we have made, we've talked to those people generally, so I really don't expect that many people to show up. It's just a mandated meeting that we have to have.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Tuesday, Friday, we go on this ride with Joe and afterwards we meet. Is, is that what you're saying? With the liquor license people?
No, that'll be a special meeting. You'll have to confuse.
And you don't know when that's going to be? All right, that's what I didn't get.
Liz?
Yes.
The time of the open house, six?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven. We made it a little later, or, you know, regular time so people could get home from work. We made it a little later or, you know, regular time so people could get home from work.
Yeah, so we got seniors meeting. Or is it the next week? No.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
If there's no other business, motion to adjourn.
My second.
Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, did you find, so, you said it's adjourned?
No meeting here until next week, so.
There's no meeting here tonight.